Everybody good? Okay, we'll reconvene the August 25th meeting in Dublin City Council. Tim, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
(inaudible)
Well, welcome, everybody. This evening, we have a special presentation, a proclamation. We're going to talk about distracted driving, which is, as we all know, is a growing problem across the nation. I think each and every one of us see it just about every day when we're on the road, whether it be in our local communities or on the freeways or really across the country. Distracted driving is a growing problem across the nation. Last year, we lost one of our own, Maria Tiberi, to a distracted driving accident on September 17th, 2013. Mr. Tiberi's and WBNS TV started Maria's Message, a campaign to end distracted driving. Dublin wants to be a model community in support of that campaign to end distracted driving. In 2011, Dublin City Council passed one of the toughest distracted driving laws in the state. The ordinance states that motorists must devote their full attention to driving and allows officers to stop motorists solely for distracted driving. The state law that prohibits texting requires that officers notice another traffic violation before stopping the motorist. This proclamation is in support of Maria's message and its goal to end distracted driving and save lives. And so, Dom, if you would join me and, I think, Chief Heinz?
This proclamation, "Whereas the Ohio General Assembly has designated September as Safe Driving Month in honor of Maria Tiberi and other victims who have lost their lives in motor vehicle-related accidents, and whereas Dublin residents Dom and Terry Tiberi, parents of Maria, have honored her memory by making it their mission to create awareness of distracted driving and its consequences, and whereas distracted driving is defined as anything inside or outside the vehicle that causes motorists to take their eyes or mind off the road or their hands off the wheel. Distracted driving accidents are the number-one killer of youth and young adults ages 8 to 24. Nine people are killed and more than 1,000 are injured every day in the United States as a result of distracted driving. And whereas the city of Dublin supports Maria's message, which is focused on increasing awareness of and ending distracted driving, and whereas the Dublin Division of Police will lead an enforcement campaign focused on changing driver behavior in order to minimize the occurrence of crashes, simultaneously, the city will initiate an educational campaign that raises awareness, supports education through enforcement, decreases accidents, and saves lives. Now therefore, I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2014 as End Distracted Driving Month in the city of Dublin and encourage all drivers and motorcyclists to focus on the task of driving without distraction, thereby ensuring the safety and well-being of all citizens." And I'll present this.
Dom, I know I have another one here for you, Chief. Thank you. Chief, you're gonna say a few words? Thank you. Thank you so much. Officer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that every year, one of the goals of the Division of Police is to reduce our property and injury accidents, and we know that a vast majority of those crashes are caused by distracted driving. So our enforcement campaign is focused on three things: to educate the public about the dangers of distracted driving, to try to reduce crashes, and to try to make sure that everyone understands that distracted driving is a danger that we can all prevent. So, thank you very much.
Is there a video? Do you want to play the video?
I never thought in a million years I'd be doing anything like this. My wife and I are so grateful to the outpouring of love and support that we have received. Senator Hughes, thank you very much. Tom McCash is here. Mayor Keenan. I can only tell you that it just seems like it was yesterday that Heinz was ringing our doorbell at 2:27 in the morning, and I remember walking down the hall and looking out the window and seeing seven policemen standing there. And I saw Heinz, who I've known a long time, and the gentleman next to him said, "Chaplain," you don't have to be the smartest guy in the world to realize something terrible had happened. September 17th is the day that we lost our angel. And, you know, you don't choose this, it chooses you. And we got together as a family and we decided we want to try to do something about this epidemic. And you heard what the mayor said, it is an epidemic. And unfortunately, it's taking our youngest and our brightest, and we need, as parents and grandparents, to say enough is enough. We need to educate our kids better, and that's what Maria's message is about. It's twofold, it's putting an end to distracted driving, but we are encouraging defensive driving. And we just put 100 kids through a defensive driving class through Mid-Ohio, and those kids found out firsthand that if they take both hands off the wheel, they can't do the maneuvers they need to do to keep themselves safe. I tell the kids that your parents, your grandparents, the police, they all care about you. Parents love them. We ask that the kids love themselves to protect themselves. There's too many of them dying, and Dublin was hit very hard in a six-month period. We lost three kids, and I would argue all three of them were involved distracted driving. Distracted driving is not just texting, it's anything that takes your hands off the wheel, your eyes off the road, or your mind off the driving. Alcohol will do that, drugs will do that, playing that next great song will do that, and it's just not worth it. Taking a selfie to send to your friends on Facebook is not worth the pain that my family has gone through, and we are determined, I make you this pledge, it is now a mission, and we're gonna do everything in our power to put an end to this epidemic. It's not just a problem in Dublin, it's not just a problem in Columbus, it is a problem in the country, and we want to be an advocate for the folks that have lost kids out there. There's too many of us out there, and I want them to know that we're here for them, and we're here for you, parents out there, we're fighting for your kids. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you, Dom, and I know Senator Hughes is here, former mayor, our former mayor. And then we also have Representative Duffy, who's here in support of this as well. We have a video that we want to show, and if you want to roll that for us, please?
She loved life, and she lived it to the fullest.
She just had this light. Whenever you would talk to her, she brought so much light to everybody.
She was bigger in life, she was five foot nothing, 110 pounds, but she was like this dynamo, and when she'd come into the room, she would light it up.
She was the nicest person I've ever met in my life. Better person than I ever could be.
September 17th is a day that I will never forget. I hate that day, and it's a day that I lost, my little girl.
I said, "I love you, Maria," and she, "I love you more, Mom," and she slammed the door, and that's the last time I talked to her.
So at 2:25 in the morning, the dog started barking, and I heard a car door, and I said, "Thank God, she's home."
The doorbell rings, and Dom went to answer it.
And I looked out the window, and I saw seven policemen standing there, and one of them said, "Chaplain." And as a dad, you know, you just know this isn't good.
That's a parent's worst nightmare.
He said, "I don't know how to tell you this, but she was in a horrible accident tonight, and she didn't make it."
There's been a tragedy impacting our TDP family this morning, and we're sad to report that Dom Tiberi's 21-year-old daughter, Maria, died last night in a car accident along I-278.
It's been several months now, and to me, it's like five minutes ago. It seems like it just happened. I have a hard time not thinking about that night. It is a parent's worst nightmare, and that's the reason that we have done what we've done. Distracted driving, yeah, it's texting, it's playing on the phone. I mean, it's eating, it's putting makeup on, and we may never know what happened to her. Clearly, something happened for her to hit a semi truck at 53 miles an hour. We can either give up, stay in self-pity, or we can pick ourselves up and try to do something about this. I never wanted Maria to be a statistic. I want people to know that if it can happen to me and my family, it can certainly happen to your family. It is the number-one killer, the age group 8 to 24. I want to save lives, we want to save lives, we don't want to have any more tragedies.
It only takes a second to be distracted, and it can happen to anybody, anybody. You look away, it can happen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We've had some personal experience in our family, and my daughter at Miami University with a friend, this occurred, and we started some legislation here early on, and this council's been very proactive with distracted driving, language and ordinances, so our FIFA sympathy. Thanks to everyone for coming out. Okay, this will bring us to the portion of our agenda with respect to citizen comments, and I see that Mr. Maurer has signed up.
Given the profound penetration of sorrow in the room, I'm gonna postpone what I have to say here until the next time.
Thank you, Mr. Maurer, that's very thoughtful. We also have, I see Representative Duffy has signed up as well. Representative?
Thank you, Mayor Keenan, Vice Mayor Gerber, members of council. I just want to indicate my interest in periodically, every few months or so, appearing before you not to speak, just to come to council meetings, be available for you to talk about issues with me if you'd like, be able to answer questions about what's going on in the legislature, and occasionally to take positions in support of some of the issues that are before council. House Call 5 is one of those. I've had numerous conversations with you, Mr. Mayor, and Vice Mayor Gerber. So, that's pretty much it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, we'll look forward to seeing you at the meetings. Thank you, Representative. Our consent agenda, any council member have any items they'd like to be removed? There's no request, is there a motion to approve the actions for the four items?
Well moved.
For a second?
Second.
Ann?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Genizzi Zarker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ordinance 22, page 14.
Amending Chapter 153 of the codified ordinance of the city of Dublin to permit community residences for people with disabilities in residential districts as required by the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 and the Ohio Revised Code, provided necessary dispersal and licensing requirements are met, amending Section 404.5 of the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code adopted by the city of Dublin to establish a square footage requirement for occupants, and amending Section 153.234 of the codified ordinances of the city to modify the notification requirements for public hearing.
Ms. Reedler?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you know, this legislation was before council at your April 28th meeting. Staff was directed to engage an expert in the group homes field and provide more extensive coverage of this topic. To that end, we engaged an expert, Daniel Lobber, who prepared amendments to the legislation that's before you tonight. Mr. Lobber added several definitions to the code. He developed a new dispersal measurement that we believe is unique and takes a very proactive approach in ensuring that clustering does not occur for these types of residences. The legislation also adds a new clause on overcrowding in the property maintenance code and expands the methods for providing notice for rezonings under Section 153.234. And I'm happy to answer any questions tonight. Thank you.
Very good. I know the report was really well done.
Thank you.
Answered all my questions, and I know we had an expert involved in that, so, council questions?
Real quick, Mayor, I just want to thank the staff and the Law Department for doing what they did. I mean, this is a sensitive topic, it was addressed head-on with innovative ways, it was thorough, it was complete, it was, again, sensitive to the issues, it was an outstanding proposal that addressed all of our concerns. I very much appreciate the way the staff handled it.
Thank you, Greg. We do have a couple speakers on this, Mr. Maurer?
I have a number of questions, most of them relating to the pictures of topography, which I can't quite get into my mind. First question. See the memo on page 3, under C, Requirements to Be Admitted. Paragraph 1. I can't see quite what the category of people is involved here. These are, it's not on?
Yes.
Did you hear everything I said up to this point?
Yep.
The, these, I gather, are elderly, fragile people. And I don't know, are they on the way to assisted living?
In our original legislation, the Ohio Revised Code addresses a certain subset of individuals with disabilities. Our expert, he suggested that we expand, and so this will cover anyone who's covered under the Americans with Disabilities Act, so it's very expansive.
Okay. The topography I've got asked a question about, there are apparently supposed to be eight lots in one end and 600 feet, well, eight lots at one end and 600 feet away from another structure of this sort. Now, are these, are you regularizing something which is in existence? Do these housing, this is housing exist? Or is it looking forward to, or are you regularizing something that is in existence?
To our knowledge, there are three residences who would fit into these categories in Dublin, and so what it does is it gives a layered approach to the measurement. First, it says that you can't have any more than eight, it can't be any closer than eight lots on your side of the street.
On one side.
Right. And then we take the lot that's in the use, the community residence that's in existence, and we draw a circle 660 feet from property line to property line. So it's a layered measurement.
And I gather if there's another structure of this sort, it has to be 600 feet away. What's the 600 feet all about?
I think there's just the reference to the 660 feet, that's our measurement. There is a reference in the experts' report to a range, and 600 is used in that range, but 660 is what's used in the ordinance.
Oh, yes. Okay. One minute. I think those are my questions.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maurer. Deborah Mitchell? If you could state your name and address for the clerk?
My name is Deborah Mitchell, I live at 178 Longview Drive in Dublin, and I'm here as the acting president of Mid-Century Dublin Neighbors Association. We wanted to go on record as saying that we are very happy with this outcome. There are some residents who perhaps were hoping for greater dispersal than what is contained in this ordinance, but speaking collectively and definitely speaking personally from my point of view, this is a very innovative and great solution that acknowledged the needs of Dublin, both now and in the future. It involved collecting input and actively working collaboratively among residents and the legal team and council, and it's a real model piece of legislation or an ordinance. So, from the beginning, we wanted balanced neighborhoods. It was all about maintaining balance, and not only do I believe we address the issue of balance with this, but it is flexible enough that it can address all kinds of, you know, things that may develop in Dublin or on down the line with changes in demographics and the use of group homes or residences for multiple individuals. So, for our neighborhood, you know, it's been a long journey, but we're very, very happy with the outcome and with how the process unfolded, so we just want to go on record as saying that.
Well, it's a great day for us when we can make residents happy and also comply with federal law.
It's a good thing, right? We feel that way, too.
Thank you. Okay.
I'd like to share with council that that really truly is high praise because Ms. Mitchell spent an inordinate amount of time researching this and writing and doing all sorts of learning and studying to understand exactly how these things work, and she's probably, other than Daniel Lobber knows, more about than anybody in the room, so.
Well, we'd be remiss-
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Remiss not to also thank staff and legal counsel and the-
Absolutely.
-experts that helped shepherd us through this, so thanks, thanks to all for that good outcome. Okay, that will bring us to second readings, that would be-
We need to have-
Oh, we gotta move.
Vote.
I'm sorry, we gotta move on this. We had councils, any further discussion? If not, we'll have the vote then.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Genizzi Zarker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
Okay, and I move to waive the council rules of order to address ordinance of 76-14 amended and 77-14 together?
Second.
Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genizzi Zarker?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider?
Yes.
The two titles, ordinance 76-14 amended, establishing a new Bridge Street District zoning, Bridge Street District zoning district, BSD Scioto River Neighborhood District and related code amendments for the BSD Scioto River Neighborhood to zoning code sections 153.058, 059, 060, 062, 153.063, and 153.065 of Dublin codified ordinances. And ordinance 77-14 rezones 23 parcels totaling approximately 66.97 acres from BSC office residential, BSC residential, and BSC commercial districts to BSD Scioto River Neighborhood District and BCS public district.
Thank you, Ann. Ms. Ray?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you again for allowing us to present both of these together. We made minor changes to the Bridge Street District Scioto River Neighborhood District event, code amendments. We detailed those in your memo, and we made no changes to the proposed zoning map amendment. I have a presentation available if you'd like, otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have this evening.
Counsel? Tim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. With respect to the code amendment, obviously, and with respect to, I guess it's, oh, where are we? It's 150, 153.062, and I want to go right to the exterior materials for both, I believe it's for apartment buildings and single-family residences.
Sure.
We had this discussion, or some part of it, last time around, I believe, and it's centered around the use of fiber cement siding, and, well, I believe that there was a proposal, a staff proposal, it's a limit it's used, no more than 20 percent, is that correct?
That was a topic of discussion with the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, they elected to save that discussion for the overall Bridge Street District code update, at which point we're in the middle of doing that right now with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They wanted to review that more comprehensively, but that is something that's currently a permitted primary material for those building types.
Well, help me understand that. Could something be approved in the interim before this overall update is complete, such that we could have something go forward with in excess of 20 percent fiber cement siding, and then later, after the overall code is amended, if in fact, we inserted a provision that you could not exceed 20 percent, we could have that conflict?
As it stands today, the code would allow fiber cement siding as a permitted primary building material for certain building types. You referenced the tables in the code, the tables for the, for example, the single-family, detached, attached corridor building, apartment, not the corridor building, the apartment building, a few others of those types of buildings would allow that as a permitted primary material. There are a couple that, as was stated in the letters that was submitted to council and the Planning and Zoning Commission when we reviewed this, that expressed significant concern with that proposed zoning code amendment, given the level of current development that they are kind of factoring that as a material in. Of course, those would be evaluated based on the merits as those go through the Planning Commission and other required reviewing bodies, but as it stands today, that material would be a permitted primary material for those specific building types.
Primary material?
Correct.
And as I looked at the Planning and Zoning Minutes, Commission Minutes, you know, there seemed to be, some numbers expressed concern that we were, we were tailoring our code to a pending proposal. Is that accurate?
There were some concerns with that. We've tried to eliminate as many of those as possible, and what we have sent forward is something that if the Planning Commission did recommend approval for and did express a comfort level with, again, with the understanding that we would review that more comprehensively.
So if there's a pending, excuse me, I'm sorry for the interruption. So if there's a pending multifamily development, we pass this this evening, they can use fiber cement siding as a primary?
They can continue to, there are no changes proposed to the materials for that.
I don't know if that causes anybody else concerned, but it causes me concern.
That, there are two that I'm aware of. One is outside of this zoning district. So the Planning Commission wanted to address everything in Bridge Street. So I, I mean, I have been the one that has been championing this, so I don't disagree.
I certainly appreciate your insight. Any insight you can offer me to allay my concerns?
I think our concerns are still, are still there with this action. I mean, it doesn't change anything regarding building materials, they are, cementous siding is still approvable.
But what was the theory, I guess, behind the Planning and Zoning Commission about allowing it but knowing they might change it?
I think that rather than do it just for this neighborhood and just for this area, they wanted to look, as you know, we're looking at the entire Bridge Street zoning code and sort of going through piece by piece, and we have a special meeting on the 11th, and I don't know if this is a topic of discussion for the 11th, but Planning Commission is having a special meeting to talk about the overall rezoning, or overall zoning district and the tweaks that we want, might want to make, and it's my understanding that that building materials will be discussed then. They wanted to do it comprehensively rather than just for this neighborhood.
But, I mean, I can certainly appreciate that, but since the neighborhood came first, before the comprehensive, which does seem a little backward, then we have to address that, what's in front of us.
Right.
Because we don't even know whether the Planning Commission is going to recommend a change. So I think the first decision has to be by us, is to, do we want that material in there?
And I think that would send, you know, if we made an alternate decision tonight, I think that would send a strong-
Correct.
...message to the Planning Commission about what our wishes are with regard to that. Rachel, I'm wondering if we were to say 20 percent or 25 percent of the building could be this cementous siding and nothing more, then if there was a project that was otherwise a great project and the Planning Commission wanted to allow it to go forward with more than, is that a waiver?
That would be a waiver, yes.
Okay. So we still would be able to have it if there was some compelling reason and the Planning Commission believed that it was a compelling enough reason-
Yes.
-that it could be allowed?
That would be a possibility, correct.
If we were to make this change tonight, with respect to this material, what effect, if any, does that have on present applications?
There are a few applications, one Ms. Saley referred to, that has gone forward for When they moved forward for the site plan review, which is much like the final development plan, they're required to be substantially similar to the conceptual level review. So that would kind of be a, a bit of a change midstream for that particular project. We don't know yet all the materials that the developer of the Scioto River Neighborhood District is planning to use, although it, it's possible that they could potentially be proposing some of these, factoring that into some of their financial models. We don't have all those details yet, but it is a possibility.
But they, they aren't proposing, the, the, the project that I'm thinking of that's in this, this area has not been brought forward, has it? Aren't they just working on like?
They're focusing on the public realm, the streets network at this point. They haven't brought any buildings forward for consideration yet. That's why we.
And the buildings that they do, aren't there, aren't there housing?
No, not at this time.
And then the other apartment complex that we're talking about, the project, is outside of this neighborhood.
Right.
I think the one other reason why we wanted to, again, review this more comprehensively has to do with the type of, what fiber cement siding is and how it can be used. Often, if you think about it, you might be picturing the, kind of the lap siding type of material. There are other applications for it. There's more kind of panel types of applications, more things that can be more appropriate to larger scale buildings, more mixed-use types of buildings. So it's for that reason we really wanted to take a look at, are there other types of quality measures that can be built into the code to potentially allow those types of materials in an appropriate setting? That was the other, I think, thought process behind that.
I think, Rachel, you hear our concern.
Sure.
We don't want to, we don't want this to get out ahead of us, and then we end up with some buildings that we're not happy with because we didn't act fast enough.
Sure.
And we didn't, you know, telegraph our message to everyone that, you know, these are our expectations for the buildings.
I guess we also don't want to constrain the architects into creating something that's, by setting so many standards, that it's relatively unattractive. So it's, you gotta be very careful because, like you said, you're thinking lap siding, we're thinking lap siding, but actually, there's entire panels, this kind of material that are very attractive, very contemporary, and fit the architectural style.
Right. And, and from that standpoint, you know, I, I need an education, you know, and, and I need to understand exactly what these things look like and, you know, may have been walking by them downtown and I haven't realized that that's what it is.
Well, and, and John, certainly you make a good point. And if you look at the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, you know, there was a discussion of the use of, of the cement siding, you know, in either the lap style form or, you know, in a, in a different application. And, you know, I agree with you, that might be acceptable, you know, but I question whether we want to see 100 percent of that. And, and, you know, as I've been saying for quite some time now, you know, we have centuries' experience with brick and stone. We don't have centuries' experience or even necessarily many decades' experience with fiber cementous siding. So hence my skepticism. So what was staff's, what was the inspiration for the 20 percent limitation?
That was the, kind of the dividing line between what was going to be considered a, a primary building material versus a secondary building material. Any combination could be used. It is somewhat an arbitrary number, but it's something that we felt consistent with. And as we worked with our code consultants, they recommended that as, as an appropriate number and an appropriate mix of materials to use.
I mean, I guess, speaking for myself, obviously, you know, I'd feel more comfortable with respect to what we're considering this evening going forward, you know, with some sort of percentage limitation, you know, until we're further educated, I guess, and, and we see what is being proposed with respect to the overall code.
And there's correspondence in here, right, on this exact issue? And this correspondence could say that this could bring the whole project to a screeching halt? And that's what the correspondence said?
They expressed significant concerns about it. That's correct.
But again, there is the waiver option that's available to a developer.
That's correct.
And that would put the discretion with the Planning Commission.
So I would move. That we add 20 percent in this recommendation with the understanding that developers can seek waivers from the Planning and Zoning Commission if they choose to have something greater than that. And not related to this motion, but I think we would all like to have a presentation, comprehensive presentation about all the various options we have with this material.
So this is a motion to amend ordinance.
Correct.
Seventy-six fourteen, seventy-seven fourteen.
I would say that.
Well, again, ask staff, what effect on the applications we presently have if we were to approve this motion? What does it?
Well, based upon the information that we currently have received, I mean, it does come down to the economics of the projects that have been submitted. And I don't know that we have all of the percentages on the, the materials that are being used for all the projects, but it will have an impact. And in all of the projects that we're working with, at some point in time, there, there will be an economic development agreement with the city and the developer on the project. So what likely will happen is that there'll be a larger gap financially, that they'll be looking to us to provide assistance in helping to fund that gap.
See, I don't disagree with Tim with where you and Amy want to go with this. I don't disagree with that at all, but I, you know, but John makes a very good point. And, and I think there are some creative ways to use this to some extent, certainly waivers for if they want to do other things. But, you know, I, I rather, some part of me wants P and Z to vet this complete issue. And, and the presentation, I think, getting to what you're talking about, Merrily, so we have all the facts on the table, they're gonna have a special meeting to vet this or through this, make a, and then the recommendation comes to council, correct?
Sure. Yes.
And they're meeting on the eleventh of September?
Yes.
Is it anticipated they'll be completed that night?
They will have the second half of the code. They've gone through the first half. We can revisit this topic. We did do that to some extent back in, in July, Ms. Salee was absent, but we can certainly revisit this topic and vet it out a little further in light of the council's discussion this evening.
Well, I, I guess a couple of things, Rick, that I, I don't disagree with you and I don't want to stop projects that are in place. But I also am concerned about the Planning and Zoning and the length of time that it's taking for them, and they're looking at the whole code. And, you know, so even on the eleventh, it's not going to be completed. So we're looking at November, you know, December or something before we even get the code. And, you know, how do we ensure that we don't get the, these are massive buildings that we have that are in the process now, that we don't have them using 80 percent or something of this material unless it's through these unique ways of use of them? That, that's my only concern because it does set a precedent for the appearance of the first things going up, really.
Merrily, I, you know, I respect that thought. It makes, it makes some sense, but it's, you know, if Amy, I mean, is, is Planning and Zoning Commission aware that we are very much looking at this and very much interested in, in their, their vetting this and getting it back to us as soon as possible? We're not looking this to be a career on their part to get back to us.
You know, I, I think that if there was a doubt in anyone's mind on the Planning Commission, I will certainly be able to carry a message back to them.
Yeah.
However, I think that, you know, what we do with this would send, as I said, send a strong message. And, and again, you know, a developer can always ask for waivers, and as Marcia said, every development is going to come to us with an economic development agreement attached to it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm, I'm willing, I'd like the education. Meanwhile, you know, we saw a, a, a project that was, you know, a drawing, but it was, you know, pretty much a bunch of lap siding buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And I was pretty shocked when I saw that. And, and if I can, you know, somehow positively influence that, you know, I'm interested in that. And I don't think, you know, waiting necessarily does anything other than, you know, causes more consternation. I mean, maybe it's just good to say what we want and then, you know, go forward.
Well, it wouldn't be my expectation to like something like that, but, I mean, you know, the whole purpose of this new code was to expedite the process. By golly, we're gonna give some certainty to, to the developers and to government and move on with these projects. And it seems like we're doing Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid, and we still have this, this big code that no one can get their hands around. So maybe that's a little sense of frustration on my part, but, but the reality is, that's where we are. So I, I, I don't like putting Band-Aids on things when we, when we have the opportunity to fix it and do it right. But I don't know what the time delay is. I just.
Rick, I appreciate your frustration. I think we all feel it. I, I guess I'm, I'm concerned. I, I think that the motion, the pending motion provides a safety net. You know, there are still options, you know, within our regulations, be they waivers, and, you know, to exceed this percentage, not to mention the fact that we may see a percentage exceeding 20 percent, you know, when this overall code's approved. But, you know, we only get one opportunity to do this right. And as I've said numerous times before, go to the short north, go to Victorian Village, go to Harrison West. You don't even need to go outside central Ohio. Go to downtown Columbus, go to the arena district, and, and I challenge you to find the use of fiber cement anywhere. And, and I would ask, how, how is that possible? And, and we always believe that we hold people in this community to a higher standard.
Rachel, what's the timeframe on a waiver if indeed somebody needed to get to, say, 27 percent or some number?
They could review that as part of any review at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the next review, they could, they could evaluate that. It only takes one meeting.
Well, Rachel, with respect to the, to the waivers, it's obviously something new in our process. Is that, if the applicant says, I, I want to apply for a waiver for the following reasons, is that automatically heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission or is it discretionary by the part of Planning and Zoning Commission?
If it's requested, the commission will review it automatically.
So they have to hear it?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I don't like the Band-Aid approach. I hear what everybody's saying. It's, you know, it's something, you know, maybe it's not wrong, but it's just not right. You know, the old saying goes. I know where everybody wants to go with this, but I just, I don't like the Band-Aids. I really don't.
No, I, I don't disagree with that, but we've got the case in front of us. So, you know, that's the challenge that we're faced with. So we either leave it open-ended and get 100 percent, you know, or something short of that, or we put some percent on. I mean, not wedded to the 20 percent, you mentioned that. You know, if there's some percent that, you know, is more reasonable, you know, I don't think they have to come for 100 percent of the money, think the city should pick it up. I, I think that they can ask for a waiver of, of some of it as well. But I, you know, I don't disagree with Tim either, that I don't know why in Dublin you would want to build a building with those kinds of materials when we don't see them in central Ohio and communities that haven't had the building standards that we've typically had.
Well, here's what I suggest we might do. We can pass the 20 percent tonight. The P and Z is gonna review this, and there you have a team of architects who are gonna put a lot of time into it. See what they have to say if they want to modify that. This also covers the problem of the lap siding look, which I don't think anyone's excited about unless it's very cleverly used, then we could shift into panels. That allows them to do a waiver if they have to, to do something of architectural significance or interest. So just to move this along, because I don't think we're gonna design these buildings here tonight.
That's right. And, you know, that, that's fine, John. I can go along with that. It's just, you know, I want to emphasize the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we gotta get moving on this stuff. It's, it's been going, this, this whole code has been dragging on way too long.
A lot of mixed signals to the development community, for sure.
Three, four years now. It's, it's good.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. We have, Jennifer, we have, we have some public, Mr. Maurer signed up to speak to this. Do we do this first or do we, before we do this?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we'll call Mr. Maurer to speak to these, these issues here, public. And I guess the motion and second will be in suspense.
I have a pinpoint question and then a huge one. Pinpoint. In the memo, on page two, under other modifications, do you have that? Page two, under other modifications.
Uh-huh.
Got it? Okay. What does the phrase group homes refer to?
That is actually in reference to the, the community residences.
To what?
The community residences, part of the ordinance that we heard just prior to this one. We had previously classified that as a group home. Pending this legislation, we are electing to eliminate it from the use table as part of this action to be addressed more comprehensively.
So it does refer to those compassionate homes we talked about earlier?
The community residences, correct.
It's a housekeeping, I really, at the end of the day, technical.
Well, let me ask this question. Is that not discriminatory? Why should those compassionate homes not be allowed or involved in that, in that development?
The reason why we eliminated group homes in this legislation is because we comprehensively address them throughout the code with the previous legislation. So we're not calling them out in individual districts in those individual sections. Instead, you'll look to the legislation that we had before, and that'll govern all the community residences.
It doesn't eliminate them from the community, any place. It eliminates them out of these pieces of.
They still have to follow the rules comprehensively across the city with what we did previously. It just pulls it out of this piece. So it's good.
Right. If you look at the last piece of legislation, it calls out all the different districts, too. And so you'll see those districts referred to in the previous legislation.
All right. Okay.
Very good.
Big deal, no.
It's a good question.
You won't have to do this by show of hands, but how many of you read the legislation, not the, not the memo, the legislation in here involved? You'd have to show of hands. I looked at it, and you know, do you, that that would require a bureaucracy, the size of the city, which offers a solution, of course. You could pass a piece of legislative legislation which would make every citizen responsible for the execution of one of these items in this legislation. This is massive stuff. Now, you, there's a question, there's a bureaucracy for this. And you might have to use the city to do it. One citizen after another responsible each one of these pinpoints here.
We appreciate your insights, as well, Mr. Maurer.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right. I just had seven letters written down here and said G E T R E A L.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor. You want to read that back for us, Ann?
Let me see. This is a motion to approve a 20 percent, sorry, a 20 percent limitation on the fiber cementitious siding.
I think that captured the essence of it. Who made the motion originally, please? Merrily, and the second was?
Tim.
Okay. Ann?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zirker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Ah, yes. And an ordinance of seventy-six fourteen and seventy-seven fourteen.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zirker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance seventy-nine dash fourteen?
I'm sorry. Did you say?
We did seventy-six and seventy-seven together, right?
Right.
So we're on seventy-nine fourteen now?
I'm sorry. Petitioning the county commissioners of Franklin County, Ohio, for the annexation of approximately 3.5 acres of land located on Dublin Road near Interstate 27 to, to the city of Dublin. the city of Dublin.
Ms. Reedler?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The legislation before you will permit the Law Director's Office to file a petition for annexation for two city-owned parcels on Dublin Road. Total acreage is approximately 3.5 acres, and the property will provide additional park acreage adjacent to the Sied River. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? No further discussion, Ann?
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Ordinance 80-14.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Holland Associates, Inc., to induce it to retain an office, associated operations, and workforce within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Mr. Clary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have nothing additional to add from first reading, but I would like to introduce Julie Casper, CFO of Holland Associates, to give a little bit more background on the company and the project. And of course, I can answer any questions you have.
Very good. Welcome, Ms. Casper.
Hi. Thank you for your consideration today. I just wanted to thank Michael also for preparing our incentive package. Holland Associates has been in Dublin for 25 years, and we were founded over 30 years ago in Toledo. Our founder is still active in Toledo, and the city of Toledo is actually one of our larger clients. We do about a quarter of our work with municipal clients, and really, not very much at all with Dublin, mostly because of the type of work we do, which is more responding to larger environmental problems.
Which you have up in Toledo right now, right?
Probably going to keep you pretty busy.
Keep you busy up in Toledo with the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the algae blooms.
Uh-huh.
Actually, we are involved in that, the Great Lakes watershed. We, we do a lot of our work in the eastern half of the state, in the shale redevelopment or development. And a lot of our work is in the energy market. And we really have no reason to be in Dublin other than we like it here. It's safe. We love the, the community. I've lived here for 30 years, put three kids through the Dublin school system. 37% of our owners have also put kids through, or will put their kids through the Dublin schools. So it's really just a sense of community, and, and that's really why we're, you know, we would like to stay in Dublin. On the other, on the other hand, we would really appreciate the incentive due to, you know, most of our growth is outside of, of Dublin. We just opened an office in St. Clairsville, Ohio. We have offices in Indiana, Austin, Texas, Pittsburgh, and then Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Toledo. So, but our headquarters is here, and that's basically because we live here.
Very good. Well, we're glad you're here. And I know I've seen you on our list of consultants, and we just received one of those a few, few weeks ago on some projects.
Yeah, the Rec Center.
Exactly. So we appreciate that, and I'm sure St. Clairsville is a very rich territory for you with all the shale activity going on over there right now. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any counsel questions? Any other discussion, Ann?
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casper.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Takes us to ordinance 81-14.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Goken America, LLC, to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Mr. Clary?
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. No additional comments from first reading. We do have a representative from Goken here tonight that I'd like to introduce. Doug Smith is the president of Goken, and again, he'll introduce the company to you and, and talk a little bit about the expansion plans here.
Very good. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Smith. Goken America's been around for about 10 years. We provide engineering services, a lot of it here in central Ohio, but additionally, we have work out in California and down in North Carolina. We do a lot of work with Honda, and, you know, we're, we're very appreciative of the opportunity to, to grow our roots more deeply here. We're buying a building, or planning to buy a building, over off of Park Center and do some renovations there and employ a large group of people there. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're glad to have you here as well. Any other questions?
Wonderful.
Hearing none, Ann?
Ms. Genesee Zirker?
Yes, and thank you for staying here and putting more roots down by purchasing a building.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes, very good. Thank you. Let's bring this ordinance, 88-14.
Property is 0.206 acre more or less, fee simple interest is 0.122 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.099 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.101 acre more or less temporary easement from Powama Limited for the property located along State Route 161 for construction and extension of Industrial Parkway for the Academic Drive Phase 1 project and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Let's see, we have Mr. Hammer Smith up there.
Yes. Presenting on behalf of staff and, and the legal staff. You have before you this evening an acquisition from Powama Limited necessary for the extension of Academic Drive Phase 1, which you approved the bid acceptance this evening, earlier this evening. Staff recommends that you dispense with the public hearings and approve this ordinance as an emergency measure, with that I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I'll move to dispense with a public hearing and treat it as an emergency. Second. Vote on that motion?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
Very good. Ordinance 89-14?
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire 0.029 acre more or less permanent easement, 0.029 acre more or less temporary easement for Mohammed Ghaf Amar and Esther Leah Amar for the property located at 6143 Dublin Road for construction of a shared-use path as part of the Dublin Road South Phase 3 project and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith?
Actually, I want to go ahead and, and take this one.
Okay, thank you.
As, as the title states, this is for the Dublin Road South Bike Path Project, and we've come to terms with the, agree, with the property owner for the appraised value of $13,900, and we're recommending adoption this evening so that we can move forward with the closing on the property.
I'll move to dispense with a public hearing and treat it as an emergency.
Second.
Second. Thank you. On the motion?
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes. Could I just ask Ms. Grigsby a question before we vote?
Sure.
How many residents does that leave us to move forward on this path?
We have three property owners left. Two of them, we believe, were pretty close. The third one, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday of this week.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. We're getting there.
Good luck.
Yeah. Ordinance 90-14?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Dublin Building Systems, Inc., to induce Command Elcon to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, and authorizing execution of an economic development and real estate purchase agreement.
Introduce it. Mr. Clary, Ms., Ms. Gilger?
Bear with us for a second here.
They're working in tandem here, I see.
Okay, so the land referenced in the ordinance is labeled here. Of course, the laser pointer isn't going to work. So it's obviously the shaded area, which is referenced as Lot 2. It's located on the 87-acre city-owned job-ready site at the intersection of 161 and Hootchard Road. The parcel itself is 10.035 acres, which, five acres of which is devolvable based on the large easement to the east, which is the AEP easement that was, that was agreed upon during the, the construction of the substation. The appraisal of the land is, is approximately at $90,000 an acre. So I want to provide a little context of the project, how it came about. So through our business retention program, we established a relationship with Command Elcon, which is currently located on Blazer Parkway. The company currently employs 70 and plans to create an additional 15 jobs in the next few years. And what they do, they design the software and build the control system units that are used by facilities that manufacture aggregate construction materials like cement. We, through those conversations, became aware that their lease is due to expire in early summer 2015, and that their current facility could not accommodate their growth plans. So to be proactive, we immediately started a real estate search, and what we discovered was that there was no existing building stock in the city to meet their, their needs, both size and layout. So in an effort to retain the company, we, and the company has been in Dublin since 1992, so in an effort to retain them, we began to discuss the potential of a new build project. However, the local company officials and their consultant informed us that their headquarters, based in Birmingham, Alabama, didn't want to own land or facility. They, they preferred to stay in a lease agreement. And that's why you'll notice the structure of this deal is a little different than, than normal, as far as typically, in a land transfer, we would transfer directly to the company and not the developer. But obviously, to accommodate Command's policy of, of not purchasing land, that's how we, we have creatively tried to put this together in an agreement. But because of that, we've made sure that the structure of agreement contains substantial commitments from both the company and the developer as it relates to, to the project. For example, Dublin Building Systems is required to construct a 30,000-square-foot facility, which will be occupied by Command Elcon. And additionally, this is an important note, important point to note, is DBS is required to lease the facility to Command under a rate structure that, that shows the, the land passed down as a financial incentive. So Command, on the other hand, is obligated typically, like we do in economic development agreements, to sign a 10-year lease and retain those 70 jobs and create an additional 15 jobs over the next few years. And you can see that in Exhibit B, which lays out very clearly their withholding targets per year. So again, you know, as noted, the deal is, is a little bit different than precedent, but it allows us to facilitate and retain Command, as well as add square footage of a facility that obviously is in very high demand in our community. I think we have about a 1% vacancy rate when it comes to flex space, and amidst that, that 1%, they're typically about 5,000 square feet or smaller, and just wouldn't, wouldn't work for Command Elcon. So I can take any questions you have at this point.
Very good. Counsel?
I think it was very innovative to come up with this EDA, and congratulations to you for working and thinking out of the box and a way to retain them.
Great, thank you.
And we've all had a chance to review this and have been really kept informed along the way, so we do appreciate the presentation.
Great, thanks.
Michael?
Yes, sir.
If I may, is this the property that the city purchased many years ago to induce the Columbus Crew to build a soccer stadium here?
That's correct.
Yes.
And the site was, we went through the process of getting the, the state's job-ready site certification.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll have a second reading, public hearing on September 8.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 66-14?
Amending Section 10 Voting Procedures of the Council Rules of Order.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Ms. Reedler?
As we discussed at the last meeting, this is a housekeeping measure to clarify that four affirmative votes of counsel are necessary to pass any question unless otherwise provided by charter, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good. The memo was pretty self, pretty comprehensive and covered really all the things that we covered in the, in the special meeting we had related to that. Counsel questions?
I just have one with regard to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is a simple majority of the quorum, of the, of quorum, the people present. Yes, it's not four. Correct. Thank you.
No other questions? We'll have a vote on the resolution, Ann?
Mr. Peterson, Ms. Salee, Mr. Leckleider, Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes. Okay. Resolution 76-14?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction agreement with the Ohio Power Company, AEP Ohio, to construct an underground duct and vault system along and adjacent to the Emerald Parkway Phase 8 project.
I'll introduce it. Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith?
Quite simply, counsel, you have before you this evening an agreement whereby AEP Ohio has agreed to reimburse the city of Dublin for the full cost of design and construction of an underground duct and vault system to extend along Emerald Parkway Phase 8. This system will provide electric service to the future users to be located adjacent to this new roadway. The estimated cost for construction currently around $632,000, and the design fees are $27,000. Staff does recommend approval this evening of this resolution, and I would be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Very good. I, you know, reading through that, I don't remember seeing anything like this in the past. Is that pretty typical across the state for a city to pay for that and then get reimbursed? It just seemed an unusual way to do business.
It, it's actually a unique approach and arrangement that we have created with AEP. We, and they believe that we can much more effectively build the duct system and the vault system.
Okay.
So it is not customary.
Any other questions? Ann?
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zirker.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leckleider.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Thank you. Resolution 77-14?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative project development agreement between the Ohio Department of Transportation and the city of Dublin for reconstruction of the I-270 and US-33 interchange.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammer Smith?
Previously, in your August 11th packet, you were provided, counsel, an update on the I-270-US-33 interchange project. And now you have before you this evening preliminary legislation that ODOT requires local public agencies to approve, indicating in general terms that the governing, governing body agrees to participate in the project prior to bidding a project. This project is scheduled to bid or have a bid opening January 22 of 2015. thousand and fifteen. Staff recommends approval of this resolution tonight, granting consent and cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the construction of the I-270-US-33 interchange upgrade Phase One. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Very good. Counsel, questions or discussion? If not, hearing non-vote on the resolution, please.
Ms. Chenise Zerker.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have under other requests from the Muirfield Village Garden Club. Are you addressing that, Marcia?
Right.
Oh, there's a presentation here. I'm sorry, Mr. Hahn.
Good evening.
I didn't see you back there. You were so quiet.
He got back from fishing here. He's quiet.
Where have you been?
Relaxed.
I haven't seen you for a month.
I'm trying to acclimate myself to the flatlands here, but. It was good evening to you all.
Well, it's good to see you.
It's good to see you, too. I recently met with representatives of the Muirfield Village Garden Club after they had expressed an interest in creating a Blue Star Memorial Garden within Dublin. This garden program has certain criteria that has to be met, but site location-specific criteria. We met with, we met down at the Dublin Cemetery, and after walking around, we thought that a site close to Bridge Street itself within the cemetery would not just meet the criteria of the Blue Star Memorial Garden, but also would be a great location based upon its visibility for this. There's details of the memorial program within your packets as well as what the city commitment would be on this project if it was to be approved by council. The first step of this really is to get the governing bodies' approval so they can go ahead and make the applications to the national program itself. There are representatives of the Muirfield Village Garden Club here tonight if there is additional questions or comments that they would like to make regarding this program. So tonight really is asking councils, plus, on this garden idea.
Yeah, it sure seems to me to be a very worthwhile, beneficial project, and certainly to really thank our veterans and those that have served the country over the years. Counsel, anybody want to weigh in or have any questions or comments, please?
No, I've talked to the Muirfield Garden Club, and they do, over the past three years, every project they've entered into, they've executed with diligence and really good finality. So I have no doubt that they're going to do this one the same that they've done everything else for our community, so. I think this is a great thing. I think when we were younger, we used to see a lot of these as you were heading east on the Pennsylvania Turnpike, so it's great to see one of these resurrected architecturally. I think this is a really good spot for this particular item because it sort of vertically posts the entry into the cemetery, and I think it's just a really neat place for that, and it'll have really good visibility, so it's a really good choice.
Good.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank the garden club. I think it's, sounds like, looks like a terrific opportunity. My question was, though, will we have a formal agreement with them regarding the expectations that are listed in our memo about what they will be responsible for and what the city will be responsible in perpetuity?
I haven't read such an agreement, so as it stands now, I'm not aware of a formal agreement to this, but.
How would we get that in the record, then? So, because it does outline pretty specifically what we'd be responsible for and what they would be.
We could prepare a memorandum of understanding, something.
Yeah, that probably would be a good point, though. And I may have missed this, is there a timeframe?
Why don't, why don't someone from Helen or somebody come forward?
Sure.
Please ask, answer.
It's like you've got a big crew out there, too. Welcome to every one of you. You want to state your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. My name is Helen Haupt, eight-four-two-two Greenside Drive, and I want to thank council for considering our proposal. Our timeframe will probably be close to six to nine months because we have to have fundraising activities to raise the funds to purchase the memorial. And then there's about a six-week lead time till we receive the memorial.
Terrific. Well, very good. Again, very worthwhile project. Any other questions?
Mike, I just want to say, as a veteran, I'm very pleased to see this, and as you know, we've tried to, although I wasn't involved in this, but we're trying to get the community to become more involved with veteran activities, and I appreciate all that you ladies are doing in this regard, so thank you so much.
I think I read there may be some kind of programming or whatever upon its completion, whether that be a memorial day or a.
Right, there will be a, at appropriate time, a dedication ceremony.
Very good.
And we would like to include the veterans' organizations, schools, scouting, and the Dublin community, and the Muirfield Garden Club would pay the cost of that dedication.
I think you'll find our staff very good to work with to help you work through some of the details of that as well.
Oh, thank you.
Programming-wise, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
So, we need a motion to approve the staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Ann.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Salee.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Chenise Zerker.
Yes.
Welcome aboard, ladies.
Yeah, thanks for adding another wonderful amenity to our community.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated.
Okay, staff comments, council committee reports, planning, staff comments.
A couple items. First, there was a memo in your packet from the Community Services Advisory Commission, their piano project, and they've been working on that, and they've gotten some pianos and some thoughts on what some of the next steps are, and so we will, at staff level, work with representatives from the commission on locations for the site, and at this point, we would just want to make sure that council's okay with us moving forward with that based upon what's in the memo.
Funding, was that a bed tax grant or?
No, the pianos are free. There's going to be some minor costs with tuning and storage, but we should have space to do that, so it'll be very limited cost.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, super program. Get some music downtown.
There you go. Okay, Amy, Planning and Zoning Commission representative report.
We met last Thursday. We had a full agenda and worked through that. Couple things will be coming to council in the next few meetings, I would guess, and then, as previously stated, we are going to be reviewing the code on, or continuing the code review on a special meeting on September eleventh. And as always, anybody on council is welcome to come. I don't know, are we going to have the education piece on the different uses of hardy plank at that meeting?
Can do a.
Hardy plank, I'm sorry, cementous siding. I really have to. We will do our best to make sure that we have that available for discussion that evening. Okay, and I think council would be really interested in seeing that as well, maybe, you know, via some photographs and a memo. Sure, very good, thanks. That would be helpful to everyone. All right, thank you, that's all I have.
I'd just like to add that I've already seen benefits of having you on board there, planning and zoning, and as evidenced by tonight's meeting, just the inputs really, really, really helpful.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree. Okay, standing committee reports, Rick, Admin?
Yeah, very briefly, we had a meeting at six o'clock of administrative committee as a whole, going over the, trying to re, better refine the timeline for our city manager search, and thank you all for your inputs, and also finalizing the city manager profile. So I will get back with Heather, and more to come here in the next week or so.
Very good.
But thank you all for coming early and all of your input, appreciate it.
Thank you. John, anything on Community Development Committee?
No, sir, nothing to report.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, Finance?
Yes, the Finance Committee met last Monday for the CIP. Thank you all for participating in that, and we'll be getting our final report back. We essentially made some very minor changes to it, and as we all know, two thousand and fifteen is going to find us under a lot of construction here that will result in greater mobility in our community ultimately, but it might be a little bit of a glitch while we're working on it. So we look forward to more communication to the public about some of those projects, and I think, again, we're very fortunate to have sufficient funds to be able to get down the major projects that we need to do. So that's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Public Services, Amy, anything there?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, that'll bring us to roundtable. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, the, Marcia, the memo that we got about the traffic impacts and things, and there were various projects cited, I was sort of focusing on the one with respect to the Bridge Street and the Roundabout and all that. Didn't we have some sort of a meeting where we were going to discuss traffic impacts and things like that? Is there something scheduled?
Actually, one of the things that we had talked about, gosh, it was one of our work sessions last spring where we had talked about the fact that we were currently in the process of doing the detailed design, and that by the end of the third quarter of this year, we were hopeful that we would have information on the maintenance of traffic plans, and the memo that was provided in this packet relates to that, and we anticipate having updates and presentations at the September eighth council meeting to provide the information that we have as of that point in time.
Okay, so it's at a regular council meeting, it's just going to be the presentation of that?
That's correct. The initial, and then if we need additional discussions, then we can schedule those.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Amy?
I don't have anything other than to say that I'm excited about this tunnel mural. I think it'll be a great addition to our public art collection, albeit a little bit different than what we usually do, and certainly the theme is near and dear to my heart, and looking forward to seeing that come true.
Very good, Mayor Lee.
Following up on that, I'm sure many of you might have noticed in the art section of the paper yesterday that the Dublin Arts Council was in at several occasions outlining what their special artists that are going to be here the remaining part of this year and into next year. And I would just point out one, there are certainly many that look very interesting, but one is A.J. Jalpe, who, of course, his father grew up in that home, and he will have a show there this fall, so perhaps we could get that on the calendar. It should be very interesting and something personal to him. Also, I attended the Ohio Association of Regional Council meeting on Friday. Unfortunately, the gubernatorial candidates did not come, but the lieutenant governor candidates came and each spoke to the group and went to Officer Wright's reception. He's a man of many words, but only said thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Tim?
Yes, thank you. I noticed in the materials provided for this evening's evening, I'm sorry, this evening's meeting, that there was a letter to our city manager, Marcia, congratulating the city. This is from Columbus CEO, as receiving the most votes with respect to being the best suburb to do business. So congratulations, Dana, your crew, and all city staff. That, you know, leads to this recognition, that's great. Earlier today, I also received a telephone call from the General Counsel of State and Government Relations Board, and he was contacting me to praise our finance director, Angel Mumma's, presentation to their annual Fact Finders Conference, and he said that many of those in attendance commented that they had a much better understanding than they had before with respect to municipal budgeting, and as we all know, you know, that's very important, particularly to the audience, you know, insofar as, you know, we have collective bargaining negotiations, go to Fact Finders and so forth, for them to better understand the process, where the money comes from, how's it gets spent, and so forth, so, you know, very useful not only to us, but, you know, our fellow municipal organizations across the state. And then finally, together with Mayor Keenan and Mayor Lee, we attended OU's big celebration on Saturday at their new campus, and it was quite a celebration as it should be, or should have been. They have, you know, certainly every right to be proud of what's going on out there, and had the opportunity to also tour the facility, which almost left me speechless. I mean, it's just amazing. Again, as you would expect, it's a new facility, they've invested millions of dollars into those buildings, but the technology that exists there, and what this means ultimately, certainly not only to the university, but to our community, is amazing. Just, it's amazing. I, you know, it's, you know, not genius on my part to predict that, you know, this will be a catalyst, you know, for related development in years to come, and, you know, I think that as a community, I know we will, you know, but we have every right to be proud of the partnership that we forged with Ohio University to make this happen as well. So to all of staff, to council, you know, job well done, and, you know, there certainly will be more to come. Thanks.
Was it warm enough for you there, Tim?
Yeah.
It was plenty warm, wasn't it, Mayor Lee? It was hot. Very good. Tom?
Yeah, again, I just want to say congratulations on the best suburb to do business in. That's really quite a credit, really, to our staff, Dana and his staff, the Development Department. That's a reflection of how people feel about you and doing business with your team. I think it's a great honor that, you know, something like that comes from the people who have to come over here and do business with us. So I see that as a reflection of the hard work you and Marcia and the whole team put in. Again, I just want to thank the Muirfield Garden Club. You always do amazing things, very little credit, very low-key, but you're always doing something wonderful for our community, so thank you very much.
Thanks, John, Rick.
Briefly, just want to thank the Muirfield Garden Club, ladies, thank you, and that's all I have.
Very good. Well, I would echo that the OU dedication of the osteopathic teaching hospital was pretty incredible. They had their marching band out there, and all, what is it, the marching one hundred or one hundred and five or?
Ten.
The marching, how many?
One-ten.
One-ten. My kids all went to Miami, so I didn't know that. But actually, during the presentation, one of the speakers mentioned that he was talking about Dublin and the land, and he said that he had just purchased the city of Dublin. And I, of course, I went, nobody told me about this, and he corrected, the whole crowd kind of got a big kick out of that, and he corrected himself and said he just meant a site, so, so that was good. So Tim and I did attend also an OU dinner and reception Friday night on behalf of the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation, and the city was presented with this handmade, called